A business meeting of Waynesboro City Council. Welcome everyone. If you wish to speak during the citizen comment period or during the public hearing, please sign up on the appropriate sheet in the back of chambers. Mr. Allen, would you please lead us in the back?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Item two is the adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda passes four to zero. Item three is matters from mayor. I do not have anything tonight to discuss, so I'm going to move on to item four, which is matters from council members. Does anybody have anything they would like to?
I would just remind, like to remind everyone that Fishburne Military Schools having their day of service, which will be doing a proclamation for Professor Fishburne this Wednesday, the 10th, at the cemetery, and would like to invite anyone and everyone out to come.
What time?
11:00 a.m.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else? No? Okay, item five is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes four to zero. Item six is to consider a proclamation recognizing the week of April 7th through April 13th as National Library Week, and I'm going to call Mr. Hamm.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, just a, I know that last meeting we heard from the library director concerning the annual report to library. Fortunately, the timing for this proclamation and that presentation did not align perfectly, but we did want to take the opportunity to have council recognize National Library Week, and in doing so, acknowledge the work of the employees at the library and the value that they bring to our community, not only establishing the library as a place for learning and exploration, but also the programmatic and social hub that it's become through their various programs and opportunities there. They play an important role in the health, well-being, and growth and development of not only young people, but adults as well, and I think it's important to furnish this opportunity to recognize their work and prominence in the community.
Thank you so much. With that, is there a motion to proclaim the week of April 7th as National Library Week here in Waynesboro?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. We are proclaiming the week of April 7th as National Library Week. If you would like to come forward and say anything, I don't know if you're prepared, Miss Person. And thank you so much for you and your staff and all the work that you do.
Well, thank you all for your support. So that's, that's really why I'm here. I want to thank you all for everything you do for us to make our lives better and to make the library the place it is, the warm, welcoming place it is, and to let you all know that there's a Renaissance Fair on Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00, if you want to come by. But National Library Week has been celebrated since 1958 across the country, and libraries play a pivotal role in economic development, the educational life of our community, so we appreciate your support. So thank you again.
Sure. Thank you so much. Okay, we will move on to, let's see, item...
Seven.
Seven. Okay, item seven is to consider a proclamation recognizing the week of April 14th as National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week in the city of Waynesboro. Again, I will call on our city manager, Mr. Hamm.
Sure. I think, again, similarly, this is an important opportunity to recognize the work of our animal control officer, Jennifer Henderson, but also the support that she receives from the department generally and the work that they do to make sure that domestic pets are cared for properly or treated healthfully and that where pet and public safety intersect, that they play a prominent role there as well, investigating concerns about stray animals, et cetera. But again, just a brief opportunity to recognize Jennifer and the staff in the WPD for the work that they do for animal control and support in the community and the pet owners in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Hamm. With that, is there a motion to proclaim the week of April 14th as National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week here in Waynesboro? Thank you, Mr. Allen, and a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any comments or discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes four to zero. And I'd like to also thank Officer Anderson and the Waynesboro Police Department for all of their hard work, and if you'd like to come forward and receive this, and I won't put you on the spot, but you're more than welcome to say a few words if you would like. Thank you so much. Okay, where do we go?
Break. Number eight.
There we go. I lost it. Okay, item eight is to consider presenting a proclamation naming the week of April 14th as National Public Safety Telecommunications in the city of Waynesboro. Mr. Hamm?
Yes, ma'am. This proclamation is intended to recognize those individuals that work in our EOC and are the first in a single point of entry for emergency calls that often result in the dispatching of either law enforcement, rescue, or fire assistance. They often are invisible to the caller and go somewhat unrecognized, and some would say underappreciated in the public safety system, but obviously, the role that they play and the manner in which they exercise compassion and even-mindedness and calmness and multitask in the emergency and stressful situations are, the work that they do is essential to supporting the work of the police department, the fire department, the rescue agencies. So, again, want to recognize and acknowledge their role in that overall public safety theme in our community.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hamm. Is there a motion to proclaim the week of April 14th as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week here in Waynesboro?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes four to zero. And I would also like to thank our EOC and Mr. Presser for all of your work, and if you'd like to come forward and receive this proclamation. I'm getting my exercise. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. On behalf of all the men and women of the 911 Center, thank you for this recognition. As Mr. Hamm alluded, they often go unrecognized, and they do tremendous work every day in difficult situations. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Well deserved.
Yes. Item nine is to receive a presentation regarding the Pathways Pre-Trial Division Divergent Program. Mr. Hamm?
Yes, ma'am. The Pathway Program originated in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office in Augusta County and provides an alternative to criminal prosecution when possible. As such, it can be regarded as a pre-trial diversion program, rehabilitating individuals rather than penalizing them through incarceration or fine. Qualifying individuals may receive treatment services for mental health and/or drug use. Participating individuals receive treatment, monitoring, and perform community service as an alternative to prosecution in the criminal justice system, which can result in significant barriers for individuals post-adjudication. This evening, program manager Jack Belcher and the second representative for the program will share some information about the program and possible opportunity to expand the program to serve Waynesboro.
Please come forward.
Hey, Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you for having us today.
That's advanced.
This is Caleb Kramer. He's actually developed the program over five years ago, and he's going to go over these slides. We're going to not take too much of your time, but just want to give you a good overview of what we do.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having me. My name is Caleb Kramer. I'm an Assistant Commonwealth Attorney in Augusta County. Tim Martin, the elected, is my boss, and he hired me in 2018 to form a pre-charge diversion and community service program. We are currently funded by the federal government through a BGA grant, actually, two BGA grants back-to-back. We got, we applied for and received one in 2020 and a new one in 2023. The first amount was $600,000, and this one was a million. So, one thing I'm not asking you for right now is money. We are, we are good for that. We've started in 2018, however, with basically a shoestring budget and just me essentially taking folks, at the time was misdemeanor-level marijuana possession before it's decriminalized, and having them pick up trash on the county of, the Rosewood County. We have since expanded, using our success that we leveraged from those misdemeanors into felony-level diversion program. When I talk about this program, I often get the question, how's this different from, say, like Drug Court or DUI Court or Therapeutic Dock or something like this? And I introduce them to the sequential intercept model. You can think of this as a simplified flow model of the criminal justice system as it goes from officer encounter and through the court process and then jail and probation and parole. Drug courts, jail courts, and therapeutic dockets are usually around here, intercept three or maybe even intercept four. If you have, like, reentry programs, that's intercept four and five. Diversion, and what we're now calling as deflection, which is even pre-criminal justice involvement, pre-response of a law enforcement is intercept one, and then with our partnership that we're doing with Fire EMS is intercept zero, before there's even any indication of criminal, criminal activity. And the whole idea with this is essentially, well, it's twofold. One is that the literature indicates that most therapeutic treatments that you want to give folks who are either in mental health or substance use crisis need to be implemented within 72 hours of the first contact with law enforcement or first responders. After that, essentially, the crisis has passed and they no longer are interested in rehabilitation. They just want to continue in their, in their patterns of behavior. And of course, when you, once you get to here, intercept two or three, I can tell you, as being an Assistant Commonwealth Attorney, you know, that is often 12 to 18 months after the first intercept with the law enforcement officer. So, our model over here is to take them immediately from law enforcement response and then get them connected to the services as quickly as possible. Second, of course, is that from here, all the way through here, is incredibly expensive. You know, you have court time, you have attorney time, you have public defender time, you have bailiffs, judges, clerks, you know, Middle River Region jails is quite expensive as well, as well as probation and parole. And our idea is to intercept here, implement services, actually get some value from these folks in the form of community service, and then return them to the community as productive while being members of society without having to incur all those expenses, expenses, excuse me. So we've done this by narrowly tailing our qualification criteria. So it's adults, we do not have the grant criteria or the capability of serving juveniles at this point, it's a stretch goal, with mental health or substance use abuse issues. We also are working with, like you said, Augusta Fire EMS to respond to overdoses. So this is, when there is not even any sort of criminal involvement possible, we are still offering services, using particularly friends and family and those social contacts to actually leverage compliance with our program. And then, any folks with symptoms, serious symptoms of mental illness. Now, we're not asking officers or first responders to do a full screening at the scene. That's one design criteria that we ditched immediately after proposing it. Essentially, that's what Jack is for, and he lends his clinical experience. We just tell, you know, our first responders, our law enforcement, our Fire EMS, use your judgment, and tell us, you know, you tell us who you think could use this program. These are the terms that we have eliminated. This has come straight from, from Mr. Martin. Mr. Martin takes DUIs very seriously, and we actually, as a prosecutor, we have a directive from him not to, not to reduce them. We, we charge DUIs with the folks in law, that's, that's a public safety issue. Also, any crime involving violence, we do not take, and then also known drug distribution. The reason for that, of course, is you don't want to put the wolf in among the sheep, but population of folks who are in recovery is a very vulnerable target for people who are known to distribute drugs. So those are rule-out criteria. For those who might have the question of what, is, are these hardened set, these are hard set, but you can be more restrictive. My idea is to have pathways be a turnkey operation that then the stakeholders, the Commonwealth Attorney or the law enforcement officers, the PD in Waynesboro can then set their own criteria, and they can forward the people who they think are deserving of the program, and we, we would just take them as is. But these are our rule-out criteria. We purposely designed the referral process to be as simple as possible. This is with multiple iterations with Augusta County Sheriff's Office. We used, we've started with long forms and referral processes and, you know, back and forth things, but now it's just, it's a simple card. The officers and the, now the Fire EMS folks carry this card with them in their squad cars, in their ambulances, or whatever response vehicles they have, and they just hand them out. We emphasize that 24-hour turnaround because as soon as we have that interaction, the clock is ticking to have an effective interaction with these folks. And so we, we ask them to, to emphasize that. But other than that, we also have a trifold brochure and a little handout card that has more information, but we don't require law enforcement or Fire EMS to actually have any internal knowledge of the program. We tell them, hand them this, make them call, they'll get connected with Jack anytime, 24 hours a day, and we will do an assessment, and Jack will explain more parts of the program. I'm going to have Jack come up and say, and talk about the program a little bit and how much he has involved with these services.
I know we have limited time, so I'm only going to hit the highlights. What you see there are the 14 categories of services, and what we have here is the Community Resource Guide that we put together using interns. There's over 160 now, local community resources. It sounds like a lot, and it is a lot, per capita for our area. The problem is engagement, and that's why we go to the 72-hour rule, and that's my job, is to reach out, engage them once the referral's made, and then tie them into the services based on my clinical assessment as to what they need, primary, secondary, and tertiary. We get them together with that. I'm going to leave this one with you, Madam Mayor, so that you can see actually all the services. The reality from a clinical standpoint is you can get somebody to the table, and they have no idea how to navigate the waters. There's too many services from where they're sitting, and they don't even know where to start. So a big part of preparation is helping to identify what the needs are and what order, what priority, and where they're at, and actually getting them there. You know, transportation's also one of the needs, so.
So these are the benefits, and these are the reasons why I, well, why Tim Martin decided to do this in, for Augusta County, why I think it'd be beneficial for Waynesboro to participate. So there's a reduction in caseload for both myself and my coworkers in the Augusta County Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Now, I do serve as a prosecutor still, I'm a line prosecutor, and I also, so any people who are potentially have the felony possession schedule one or two or any of the other charges, if they do fail out, I am also accountability on the back end. So I do then take those charges. If I think that they're prosecutable, I'll take those charges, and I do follow up on them in court. But overall, it's a reduction in prosecutorial costs. It's also, this shows a decrease in crime arrests, jail recidivism, overdose deaths. This is particularly in our population. I'll show you the numbers that I have on the next slide. In our folks who have graduated our year-long felony-level diversion program, we do a two-year recidivism study, we have had zero recidivists in, that come from that program. We're very proud of that. This is also, main goal is, is breaking this constant repeat cycle, and if you talk with the folks who are on the front line, you know, if there's a call for overdose, a domestic disturbance, something like that, and it's in a particular area, they know who it is. It's a frequent flyer. There's a study that I'm hoping to replicate soon that came out of Billings, Montana, that showed that in Billings, which is a mid-sized city of 100, 150,000 folks, so Stanton, Augusta, Waynesboro combined, the top 98 number of people, so 98 is the top point one percentile of people who use the health and the criminal justice system accounted for nearly 50% of the costs of that system, and was, it was over, it was over $10 million or something like that. It was, yeah, I'll, I'll show you the study if, if you want, if you want to see it. Safer communities, this also helps law enforcement prioritize their, their law enforcement, you know, emphasis on actual, on, on actual crime, actual criminals, not people who are having problems with addiction or mental health. And of course, the litter control pickup. I'll show you the numbers here, next, next slide here. So we've removed all the, well, actually, this is, I started tracking this in 2020, so this is going on four years now, over 161,000 pounds of trash removed from Augusta County. This is kind of dovetails with sort of like a broken windows theory of criminal enforcement, where if the place looks trashy, people are going to behave trashy, and they're going to treat the area as it looks like it is, they, it is treated. So Augusta County looks better. I, I think that that helps reorient people to more pro-social means of behavior. And I can see, tell you that, just personally from anecdotes from, from folks who have been through the program who say, I used to litter, I used to, you know, do drugs in the parking lot, I'm not going to do that anymore. It actually has that pro-social effect.
In our felony 12-month program, each participant's required to give eight hours a month throughout the 12-month period during the program.
We also use it as sanctions, so they actually end up usually doing more than that. So here's my, here are my numbers. So 221 total cases are referred since programming section, that's in 2020. We've gotten 73 felony levels. 99 of those cases have either been successful or are still in, in progress and good standing with the program right now. And again, this is my big take, no recidivism for graduates of the year-long diversion program. Now, misdemeanor program has lower numbers because it's a six-month program, less intervention. I can give you those numbers too, but again, this is the big takeaway, because this is the longest time that we have had with them, and we really are able to walk the, this is Jack and our case manager, I, I can't take credit for that. And again, there's our numbers for the litter pickup, the man-hours. Again, these are unpaid man-hours, just me supervising, or another lady in my office, and this is how many locations we've been able to pick up in the county. So again, we've had a significant impact, both in terms of reduction in cost for the system and then in benefit for the cleaning of the community. So I'm able to take any questions you have right now. I'm aware that we are pressed for time, so anyone who has a quick answer, otherwise, I could provide my email, and I'm more than willing to respond by email.
Any questions? Waiting on the program?
I saw that you got a three-year grant.
Correct.
Is that whole, that's all your funding, or where does your funding come?
So, vast majority of the, is, is that grant, so again, there was two. One was in 2020, that ended, that ends, actually, I did a year extension, ends September 24, and then the new one began 2022, actually, applied 22, got 23, and that goes to 2026. So we are fully funded through 2026. Augusta County does do a small contribution, so they, they contribute all the operations, so none, none of that covers the litter control operation. That's not, that's, that was pre-existing, so I can't, you know, you can't double-dip for grants essentially. So that is all Augusta County and then a bit of my salary. I was, it was a position that was pay bumped from a, a paralegal to an attorney, so that's all, that's Augusta County's contribution. Community Foundation for Central Blue, which also gives us about $5,000 a year, and we use that for incidental expenses.
Is there any other localities participating in this, or have you presented this to other localities, or were you for?
We have done, we have done this similar presentation to the city of Stanton. Yeah. I also told them they were interested in what would it look like if they just did the litter pickup, and I said, if you wanted one extra day of litter pickups, we do two days right now in Augusta County, so one extra day in the city itself, just to staff that part-time position for a year would be about $10,000.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I have my business cards here.
Yes, we have them. Thank you. This is informational purposes only, and Mr. Hamm will follow up with council following tonight's meeting. Item 10 is to consider introducing ordinances amending the city zoning code, and I will call on our Director of Community Development, Ms. Tate.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. I will be reviewing four zoning text amendments this evening and requesting that City Council consider introducing those ordinances that would amend the city zoning code. The first is related to Section 98-5.1.3 Parking Ratio Requirements, and the other section for, requested for amendment that goes along with that is Section 98-4.2.5 related to townhouse development. So the current ordinance requires that every townhouse developed within the city have two parking spaces per unit. Currently, driveways cannot count toward that required parking if the driveway is located in the front of the building, in between the building and the street. The garage can count toward the required parking. So the ordinance's intent was really to assume or to encourage townhouses to be rear-loaded, which means that alleys would run behind the units, and that would provide the access. And so if that was the case, the driveway that's behind your unit could count as one of the two spaces. But alleys is not something that we have encouraged developing based on maintenance cost and others, and we are seeing most townhouses developments that are coming through to the city for review are not rear-loaded and do have access from the street, and their driveway is one of the spots that they're currently unable to count. So in a kind of a roundabout way, this inability to count your driveway as your, a parking space has created a little bit of a parking percentage that could be utilized for guests. So the proposed change would allow the driveway that's in front of your house to count as one of your two required spaces, but then to also come up with a percentage or a number for guest parking. We presented, staff presented to the planning commission either .25 or .5 spaces per unit for that guest parking number, and the planning commission does recommend approval of the zoning ordinance change at the .5 spaces per unit. So specifically, alleys are no longer encouraged by the city. The driveways tend to be used by a homeowner anyway as a parking spot, and this really just provides some additional parking for visitors, but reduces the amount of paved areas and provides more flexibility for subdivision layout. So what, just usually with ordinance changes, I try and describe what happens today and what the ordinance would be changing. So today, if we did allow the driveway to count, you would have three spaces essentially, because it doesn't currently count, but if you were to allow it, it would create three spaces, and the proposed change would be for it to be two and a half. This is just some recently approved townhouse developments. We have the Rossar Avenue subdivision, Hope and Guilford subdivision, and then another recent small townhouse subdivision, and this just kind of shows those general numbers and what those developments would look like in terms of if you had a .25 or .5 guest parking percentage. So specifically, for an 80-townhouse unit development, the ordinance requires you to have 160 spaces. This ordinance change would allow the driveway to count towards that 160, and then if council took the recommendation of the planning commission, they would have to provide an additional 40 spaces for guest parking. And then in consultation with the parking ratio requirements, we would also be proposing this amendment that would strike this section that says that outdoor surface parking areas shall not be located between the street and the principal structure, and that's specific to townhouse development. That's all I have, unless you have any questions related to this specific amendment. And I, I can review all of them, or I guess we'll do them one at a time and then introduce each one individually.
We need to introduce them.
Actually, actually, Wesley, we had planned to do them in aggregate.
All together. Okay, perfect.
You can keep going.
Sure, yeah. Okay, so the next one is related to landscaping requirements specifically for parking lots. So you see here that the proposed changes are represented in red. The current ordinance says that the perimeter of all parking areas and other vehicular use areas that are adjacent to residentially zoned property shall provide a Class C buffer. The proposed change that's, Planning Commission recommends, is that rather than that saying The proposed change that Planning Commission recommends is that rather than that saying a Class C buffer, it would be a Class B buffer, and then also the sentence would be added that, in lieu of a Class B buffer, a wall, fence, or berm complying with our current ordinance section may be substituted for other buffer requirements. And so, for you to understand kind of what substantive behind these amendments, I'll go through what those different buffers represent. So, this amendment also helps to eliminate a little bit of an inconsistency in the ordinance. So, you'll see with this chart that the subject property is listed down the side, so you look at what zoning the subject property has, and then what zoning the adjacent property has, and that defines what type of buffer needs to be provided. And as you can see in the bottom two rows, the only instance where a Class C buffer is required is when you have either light industrial or heavy industrial adjacent to all of our residential uses and some of our business uses. So, we would often go to this chart to find the buffer classification, but then also have to remember that all areas, all residential zoned areas adjacent to any kind of parking lot require the Class C, even if only the use specifically itself, the building, and any other operations only require the Class B. So, to define those differences, the Class B and Class C, the Class C being the most robust, but really the differences are that there is a width difference. So, Class B has a 15-foot-wide buffer requirement, and Class C has a 20-foot-wide requirement. They have different planting structures, and then also kind of an additional step with the Class C is that a wall, fence, or berm is required. So, when you think of having some type of industrial use adjacent to residential, having a full 20 feet, and having shrubbery and a wall or berm is often helpful, not only for noise or light or other impacts. But this amendment would allow staff to have a little bit more flexibility if, say, you had a parking lot that was adjacent to a residentially-zoned area, and if you put a wall up or a berm up, you wouldn't even see the plannings that were then proposed as part of the Class C. So, it allows us to, in kind of tight situations where you're trying to fit in all the requirements of a site plan, to allow a little bit more flexibility there where we could choose to, or the applicant could choose to do a wall, fence, or berm, rather the entirety of all of the plantings when it doesn't, might not make sense at that specific location. So, I'm happy to answer any questions with this one as well.
Any questions?
Okay, the next one is a zoning text amendment related to our accessory buildings. So, we do not allow certain accessory buildings to be built in the front yard, and typically also have interpreted that to mean certain structures as well. But after kind of evaluating the definitions and the terminology, we didn't have a catch-all for kind of structures, but specifically only referred to buildings. So, if you think of a pool, that would be a structure but not a building, and we typically have not permitted pools as structures in the front yard. So, this is just clarifying that, that accessory buildings and also structures are not to be permitted in the front yard, and then it does exempt out fences, since they are a structure. You could have your fence in your front yard, obviously, and we have other requirements in the zoning ordinance that govern location and height, and then also exempts out signs for commercial uses. And then the last one is simply just a typo related to our temporary special events ordinance that had a requirement for when a structure is, or how to define a structure as temporary, and rather than saying 180 days or less, it should say 179 days or less, and that's governed by the building code, so we just wanted to correct that.
Okay.
That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Okay. All right, if there are no questions, thank you, Wesley. Is there a motion to introduce the four amendments to the city zoning ordinance as presented by Ms. Tate?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? These amendments will be subject to a public hearing and final consideration at the April 22nd meeting. Item 11 is to hold a public hearing on proposed amendments to the 2022 and 2023 Community Development Block Grant action plans. Ms. Tate?
Yes, so this is a public hearing to amend the Community Development Block Grant annual action plans for fiscal year 2022 and fiscal year 2023, and these amendments are in support of allocating an additional $25,000 to the Waynesboro Redevelopment Housing Authority's Fairfax Hall renovation project. So, the $25,000 would be in addition to an already allocated $25,000 for a total of $50,000 towards that renovation project. The Fairfax Hall property currently contains 54 units with six efficiency apartments, 47 one-bedroom apartments, and one two-bedroom apartment. That property did receive low-income housing tax credits in 2002 that have, they've exited that initial compliance period, and they've reapplied, and this renovation would kind of alter the unit count, and the final mix of the units would include three efficiencies, 48 one-bedrooms, and three two-bedroom units. In addition, the development would also convert nine of the apartment units to fully accessible kind of compliant for seniors, disabilities, and people with all types of physical disabilities. And then it also, the renovation is a kind of a complete upgrade of all the appliances to make it more energy-efficient. So, in order to make up that $25,000 of the annual action plans for additional support to this project, $20,958 are leftover funds from the completed Fourth Street pedestrian project, so that makes up the majority of the $25,000. And then there is $4,042 that kind of were essentially determined unallocated funds from either program income from previous years or had been left over, and so that would make up the full $25,000 that would be allocated in addition to the already existing $25,000 for the Fairfax Hall renovation project. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Nope, okay. I hereby open the public hearing.
And no one has signed up to speak.
Okay. I hereby close the public hearing. Council will vote on the proposed amendments at the April 22nd regular business meeting. Item 12 is to consider appointing individuals to the Valley Community Services Board for an unexpired three-year term ending June 30, 2026. Is there a motion to appoint Jennifer O'Manuel to the Valley Community Services Board for the unexpired term ending June 30, 2026?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. And do I have a second?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that appointment passes four to zero. Item 13 is to consider appointing an individual to the Waynesboro Historical Commission for an unexpired four-year term ending August 31, 2024. Is there a motion to appoint Joel Thornton to the Historical Commission for an unexpired term ending August 31, 2024?
I'll make it.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that appointment also passes four to zero. Item 14 is to consider appointing an individual to the Waynesboro Historical Commission for an unexpired four-year term ending August 31, 2025. Is there a motion, is there a motion to appoint Anitra Bellamy to the Historical Commission for an unexpired term ending August 31, 2025?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that appointment also passes four to zero. Item 15 is to consider appointing Jim Wood to the Community Action Partnership for Stanton, Augusta, Waynesboro, also known as CAPSOL. Is there a motion to appoint a vice mayor, Jim Wood, to the Community Action Partnership for Stanton, Augusta County and Waynesboro?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that appointment passes four to zero. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve.
I do.
And for all of the other members also stepping up to serve on all these appointments. Moving on to item 16, and that's to consider adopting a resolution authorizing application for a fire and emergency response SAFER grant. Mr. Hamp?
Yes, ma'am. Council may recall the city's application for this grant last year, pardon me, the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant, SAFER, is a federal grant to provide funding directly to fire departments to help them increase the number of trained frontline firefighters available in their communities. The goal of SAFER is to enhance the local fire department's ability to comply with staffing, response, and operational standards established by the National Fire Protection Association. The fire department is requesting authorization to apply for nine firefighter positions, three per shift, two more closely comply with the operational standards. SAFER grant would cover 100% of the nine positions, salary, and benefits for three years, and the estimated grant application is $1.9 million. It's worth noting that the requirement to continue funding for the positions after the third year has been removed. The fire department does intend to adjust its staffing model to fully utilize the grant-funded employees. We would not recommend reducing staff after the third year, but certainly that would be a decision that could be made at that time. I support this initiative and the applications. City manager recommends adopting the resolution, and we would plan to introduce funds in future budget years to maintain the new staffing levels. But certainly, the decision is up to council about how you want to proceed.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Hamp?
We have had some questions, and I actually like to make a motion to table this until we see more of what the staffing plan is by the chief.
Okay.
No more detail.
I do have one question before I make the motion to, to table. With this grant, does it also cover the equipment for the firefighters, or is that additional funding that they would need to cover those costs?
So, I think the grant covers just the, the salary and benefits.
Okay, okay. All right, I've had a motion to table until the April 10 regular, our budget work session. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I've had a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that will be tabled until Wednesday, April 10.
Okay, it would be helpful to know if there are other questions, or if simply the staffing model is the primary piece of information that we bring, but if you, if other questions or need for information occur to you between now and that evening, please let us know.
Mr. McCormick provided me some information. If you could, Cameron, provide that to my colleagues on the proposed payment after the three years.
So, I think the question that was asked was, I'm trying to, I'm going to paraphrase, was basically, how would you continue to fund that after the third year is completed? And so, I think that the model would be, you'd wait until that you got and accepted the grant, and then you'd want to confirm with council that you all would want to continue the staffing model as it's presented. If those things are the case, you could do a combination of, you would have two more reassessments between now and when you would have to fully fund that, you have three more budgets, so you could work into a model where you set aside $100, $200,000 a year over three or four years, so that way that once the, once the grant concludes, there's enough money in the operating budget to continue that initiative.
So, it would be only the uniform cost. I'd get the, I'll have to get that in for calculation for you.
And then I just have...
That's correct, yeah. Or turnout gear and uniform, yes, sir.
And then I just have one more question. If, if this resolution is adopted, and they would in fact receive the grant funding, is this something that we would vote on, or would they automatically start hiring for those positions, or is that something that we could?
So, we would have to appropriate the money, so you would have the opportunity before we started a hiring process to confirm moving forward.
Okay.
If that's the concern.
Yeah, that's, that was some of the concern with when I said about his staffing plan, because I know we have people retire between now and then if the grant, if the three years, if the grant is approved and the three years comes up, then maybe, you know, they can fill in retirement spots and such. I'd like to know who is close to retirement, things like that, and I'm just not a fan of, you know, if, spending money we don't have, because at the end of the three years, I don't want, I don't want the city to be put in a position to where if we can't find the funding for it, have to lay off firemen, versus trying to raise the taxes or find the money somewhere else.
Sure.
Just don't like spending money we don't have yet.
Sure.
Okay.
Understood.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Any other questions? Okay. All right. We are moving on to item 17, and that's communication, correspondence, and calendar. Mr. Hamp?
Two items of calendar. First, a reminder that this Wednesday, which is the 10th, at 7:00 PM, we have a budget work session, and then on April 23rd at 6:30, we'd like to schedule a joint meeting with the Planning Commission to cover some planning items, so, plan to do that.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Item 18 is citizen comment period. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Hashim Halstead.
Please state your name and address for our records, and reminder that you have four minutes to address council.
Hashim Halstead, 1625 Edge Hill Road. Hey, guys. I just wanted to talk about item 10, A and B specifically. I personally believe in prioritizing humans, and because of that, I lean in the direction of the .25. I know we're not voting on that tonight, but in your consideration, leaning towards that .25, guess, because that, a car takes up, on the smaller side of a parking spot, 120 square feet, where I take up substantially less than 10 square feet. So, if you prioritize human beings, you also allow more freedom for developers to maybe fit in one or two more units on a property, which could give more freedom to developers while also giving more freedom for humans, and I just deeply believe in that. And then, in that same realm, item B, maybe keeping that Type C buffer for residential to light industrial and heavy industrial areas, because a wall doesn't disperse sound the same way that vegetation does. So, at any point, my residential neighborhood could maybe be rezoned to a light industrial right next to me, and I would, I personally would prefer a 20-foot barrier, it's a 20, I think it's 15, 20 feet. I'd prefer that larger barrier of greenery versus one foot or six-inch wall, personally. So, that's just something worth considering. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to item 19. Is there a motion to adjourn, Mr. Allen? I knew you would. And do I have a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.